Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I call the City Council Committee of the Hall Meeting for Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020 to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence for whatever you feel you need to think about. Thank you, and Alderman Condon will graciously lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Brian, if you would please now call the roll for everyone. Dunn?
Here.
Doorman?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Peacock?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobson?
Here.
And Ambrose?
Here.
Ten President, Your Honor. Thank you, Brian. As we begin the meeting of the Committee Hall, I'll ask everybody to, if you can, you have your cellphones, if you'd put them on silent or turn them off, just so they don't interrupt what we're doing here. And if you have something to say that's an item on the agenda during any of the committee discussions or any time at the end of Republic of Business, I'd ask you to step to the podium when the committee chair or myself recognizes you, state your name, order, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please remember the decorum of courtesy and respect. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us, and we welcome your comments. For people who are just joining us, we are, obviously, in a COVID environment, and some of our respected colleagues are on the phone, so you'll hear them speak at that device there at the podium. So, believe me, they're listening and they're on. So, thank you. And thank you for everyone and all my colleagues for joining us tonight. Okay, Ms. Merritt filling in for tonight for Ms. Spiegel. Ms. Merritt, is there any city administration update?
Yes, this is a reminder to the public that we currently have numerous job opportunities on our city website, including right now the police officer, a horticulture technician, and our next Director of Human Resources. So, if you are interested, we would encourage you to go to the city website to find out more information and to apply.
Thank you, Ms. Merritt. That's wonderful, wonderful opportunities for folks. So, please, we're looking for a lot of folks, so please give us a shot. So, thank you. We have one public hearing moving on to the next item this evening. It's under Community Development. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a public hearing on the Consolidated Plan Annual Performance Evaluation Report for the year ending June 30th, 2020. I open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That closes the public hearing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. The next item we have is any petitions or communications from my colleagues on the council. Let's see, Alderwoman McGinnis.
Yes, this is, we will have our Third Ward Meeting on December 14th. It will be virtual, and it will be at 6:30. I will be getting information out about our guests, who our guests will be, and we can talk about that next week, and through emails and through the city communication. But again, Third Ward Meeting in December is on December 14th. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Jobson?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I too will be hosting a virtual ward meeting, this one for the Sixth Ward, on Tuesday, December 8th, 6:30 PM. And information can be found on city's website, various social media outlets. I'm thankful that Public Works Director Nicole Gleason will be available to provide a little seasonal information as well as answer questions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I am not going to have a ward meeting for December. The next one will be the second Thursday in January. I have a request for Ms. Gleason, if she's there, about an update on the sidewalk dining decision that we as a council made, and how many companies, businesses have used it? And where?
Are you able to hear me?
I can, thank you, Nicole.
So, there are around, I want to say, six from the email I sent today, primarily in the East Village and downtown.
Did everyone use it? I mean, did they actually put the chairs out there?
I honestly, I do not know that for sure.
And do we, did we have any complaints about any of that?
No complaints that I'm aware of came through Public Works, no.
Okay, and then I have a question for Attorney Warner. Thank you, Ms. Gleason, very much. Tom, you there?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, okay. See, I can't see you, I'm looking at my sign. Okay, what would it take to amend the special events policy to just add additional time for this particular thing, sidewalk seating, rather than have this independent process that we've developed that uses the same process? What would it take to amend the policy for special events?
Well, there's an ordinance that is, that covers similarly the topic that you're talking about. So, there could be an ordinance change that would do it, and that would be three cycles.
No, I guess my question is, and I assume that ordinance you're talking about is the one that we voted on this spring as a council?
Well, it has to do with licenses and encroachments.
Oh, 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 I understand, the encroachment one, yes.
So...
Okay, so it would need to amend the encroachments and probably amend the policy itself, right? The special events policy?
Correct. If you want to talk to me about this offline, that would be fine, too.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Thank you so much. That clarifies for me. And then, of course, COVID. We really have to recognize the effect it's having on our hospitals, our first responders, our medical personnel. And with folks traveling over Thanksgiving, it's expected to spike. So, please, we need to be especially careful of ourselves and of those around us. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Anyone else? I'm pausing. Very good, moving on. The next item is our four areas for discussion. The first area is Community Development, and we have no items on this agenda this evening. The second item is Public Safety. So, Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Jobson will lead that discussion. Alderman Ambrose, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the discussion with a Third Consideration Ordinance Amending Section 10.74.050, Entitled Muffler Prevention of Noise, Section 9.20.030, Entitled Trespass, of the Municipal Code of the City of Davenport. Anybody from the public wishing to address this?
Hi, my name is Kelly Cruz, I'm from Rock Island's First, Rock Island's First Ward.
Just hard to hear.
Um, I think that, I read the old ordinance and I read the new one, and I feel like the new one is, I don't like either one of them, to be honest with you, but I think the new one's too broad. There's a lot of "or"s in there, a lot of dependent clauses in there. And if I'm trying to decide, you know, imagine I'm a police officer, and I'm trying to decide whether to stop somebody over something. I mean, or noise, or, you know, it's just, it's just a little bit, I feel like it's going to cause a lot of trouble. I also don't know if it'll really do what is intended. You know, if people are doing, like, dangerous drag racing on Brady Street or whatever, I mean, that's already a couple of illegal things right there without that ordinance. Why are, why don't they just pull people over for doing dangerous drag racing? I think that it will lead to marginalized communities getting harassed because you can, just like with, you know, people being able to say they smell pot smoke or whatever, they can't prove that something didn't happen. Now, you know, if it's literally a modified muffler, okay, but like, if it's loud literally because there's a hole in it, then you're going to ask people to pay like another 20 bucks and a fine, then you're going to have to get them to, you know, go and get the muffler and all this stuff. You know, it seems like if you really wanted the noise to stop, what you would do is give them a voucher to go to AutoZone or whatever and get a new muffler rather than that. So, that's my piece on that. I think that it needs more consideration and rework.
All right, thank you.
Dan Adi, Second Ward. Similar concerns as far as this being, leading to another negative interaction with the public and the police. I would be looking for the city traffic engineer to do a study on traffic flows, traffic patterns, and even go as far as monitoring to get a decibel reading on the problem areas. I'm assuming that there's certain areas where noise is a problem. Harrison and Brady Street would be one that comes to mind. Of course, you have the state four-lane highway, two directions, running through Davenport City Center. A traffic study might be able to tell if there's some options there to reduce the speed, let alone the noise. So, those are my thoughts on this issue.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name's Scott Tonaclip, and I'm at 122 East 15th Street, not too far from Brady and Harrison. And I would, to a large degree, echo the sentiments of the gentleman from the Second Ward emphasizing that Harrison and Brady, the issues are there for speed and for noise. And these represent, to me, two strategies that can hopefully be encouraged to mitigate some of that. I think studies involving decibels and speeds and volume of traffic are needed, but if these are the elements that can address some of the issues right now, which at least along Harrison and Brady are right now resulting in not only safety issues, but also sleep deprivation for the people that are living at or around Vanderveer Park. That kind of proximity to a park shouldn't be afflicted by that excessive noise. And the difference between this and what it's been in previous years has been that it's been starting when the sun goes down and running until 3 o'clock in the morning. Whether that's because people don't have to get up in the morning or not, there's a lot of people that are deprived by sleep. So, it's more than safety, and it's more than the speed. We just need something now and then have the studies done after the fact to see how this works.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Okay.
We'll start off. The Alderman has some emails, or the mayor has some emails he'd like to read. Let's start with that, Mike.
Okay, so during COVID, as folks know, if you get an email sent on an issue, I'll read it in. I have two shorter ones and two very long ones that were addressed to everyone, so I'll just make sure you all have those. So, the one just addressed to me, so everybody hears it, it's from Wayne Siskoff concerning this item. Dear Mayor Mattson and Alderman, when I first read this article in the Quot City Times, I went on, "Oh, happy days, we might get some peace and quiet in this very noisy city. This ordinance is way, way past due. I feel the fine should be more, but if you are serious about enforcing this ordinance, this will work for everyone. Will this ordinance also apply to motorcycles? I think 99% of the Harleys in the city don't have, don't have mufflers. No reason you should still have to hear them two blocks down the road." Then I have one from, to me, Deborah Newman. As a resident of Davenport, Iowa, I was astonished when I read that Davenport was going to impose the city ordinance for louder malfunctioning mufflers. I think this is petty and is being discussed and considered at the most inappropriate time in history. There are certainly more pressing issues in our community that require law enforcement resources, like the daily gunshots, robberies, burglaries, gangs. Using law enforcement and police officers to stop and issue fines to cars that are noisy is ridiculous. In addition, with the pandemic, there have been many families and households that are struggling to pay rent, buy food, pay bills, et cetera. I guarantee paying for car repair that technically isn't mechanically necessary is not a priority during this difficult time. Plus, finding someone $20 who most likely cannot financially afford it is cruel. And like it or not, it will be a situation where the stopping of motors with loud mufflers will be perceived as racial or economic profiling. I would not think a city that is trying to demonstrate diversity would want this type of bad publicity. The mayor's office at City Council need to focus on how to help our small businesses that are struggling, how to bring businesses into our area, in locations that have closed building relationships within the communities with law enforcement, reduce gun violence, flood mitigation strategies, et cetera. I do not typically like to express my opinion with regard to politics, but in this instance, I felt offended as a citizen of Davenport feel a need to express my opinion. And then I have two very long ones that were addressed to me and all of the Aldermen, and I just want to make sure that everyone has those. One is from Athena Gilbreath, and one is from Bridget Dodge. And they're very long and have a lot of information and detail. Just want to make sure all my colleagues got those. Yes, yes, yes. Very good. And there's a lot of good information in those, so hopefully you've read them and you consider those, that information from both of those folks. Okay, let's see. Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Alderman McGinnis?
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Yeah, I responded to one that I got today, and I wanted to share kind of what I wrote to a couple of people. I had gotten emails prior also asking that we pass this, a couple that asked that we didn't. And I just wanted to say, on behalf of the Third Ward, you know, I do get a significant number of calls regarding loud mufflers accompanied by dangerous speeding sometimes. And almost every complaint comes not from a person with an old car or a damaged muffler, but from motorcycles. They cert, some of these certainly come from the Third Ward Brady Street area. Brady Street doesn't just cross Fourth Ward and Fifth Ward and other wards, but it also starts in Third Ward. It's a significant portion of the drag racing circuit, because it starts, of course, at the river for the Fourth Ward and goes up to Brady to 16th Street, and that's a significant part of this area. It's dangerous there, people have been killed, people are afraid to cross the street. I got a call a few weeks ago about someone who was afraid to cross the street there, since her child is school, was worried about her child crossing the street there on Harrison. There are a number of issues on Harrison, there's been at least one death, they're related to motorcycle, a motorcycle going 100 miles an hour at night, and someone hit him and killed him, and now this man has to live with what happened, who hit him. So, we have that to deal with as well. And there was no way this motorcycle could have been seen at night going 100 miles an hour south of Brady. But I also get emails from, and calls from people on the west side, primarily on Third and Fourth Streets, where it appears about Telegraph, where the one-ways began, are we seeing a pattern with one-ways here? Begins at Third, they seem to see it as a drag race, and they open up their engines, resulting in dangerous driving and noise, and also death, as there are a couple of roadside memorials there tied directly to speeding motorcycles. Both noise and speed have been a particular problem also on Fourth Street near Pine, as it curves into Telegraph, but it's also a problem along other parts of Fourth. And those are, that's on the west side of Third Ward. And then on the regional plane I got was from Bridge, near the east side, another one-way street, it was on the east side of the ward. Sometimes there are issues along gangs, but there are less complaints. Sometimes I get complaints about loud mufflers from neighbors that are living near unlicensed and illegal home repair shops in backyards where inevitably whoever's working on the vehicle decides they have to take it out to see if it's working, and it never includes its muffler work, I might say. So, that's an issue that we can address as a city pretty easily. There's noise and illegal use there, and so we can shut that down. And that kind of stops it, except it moves somewhere else and bothers somebody else probably in Alderman Dunn's Ward. This is how, this is what's happening in our urban core neighborhoods. This is how, not necessarily residents are treating our urban core neighborhood, but this is how people coming through sometimes are treating our urban core neighborhoods, as if it's okay to go there and do this kind of activity. And these more, these issues with drag racing, with speed and mufflers are very difficult to resolve. They often come from bars catering to motorcyclists that have to be, at closing time, decide it's fun to roar off. If I could, I would take you to meet a man on West Third Street who is, literally, when he talks about this, is, his hair is on fire. He's dealt with this his entire time living on this street, and he's lived there for probably 30 years, and he thinks his city does nothing for him. It's not pleasant to talk to him about this problem, but it's a problem for him. So, the problems in Third Ward, at least, are all over the place. And the frustrating aspect is the current code is practically unenforceable. I've tried with the police department. Speed, it's very hard to catch people speeding. It's hard with noise, it's difficult with noise, but if you hear a muffler and you don't have to touch up smoking to the noise, and you can do it on noise, then maybe we could start to have an impact. Because I'm tired of Third Ward neighborhoods being victimized by people who don't care about the people who live in them, and it makes me, as you can tell, pretty angry, too. So, I think Third Ward is looking for a solution for anything this city can do to help them. So, I'm going to support this ordinance. I'm not in support of enabling any sort of profiling, and I'm not interested in seeing a lot of fines for people who are having a hard time making ends meet because they can't fix their automobile. But I don't think this is what this is about in this city. I know exactly what this is about, and I think we can fix it. But to monitor that, I've also had talked to staff about possibly a requirement, some sort of ongoing basis, a quarterly or bi-yearly enforcement of this new ordinance, a check-in to see how are we doing? Is there profiling? And if there is, that's a problem. We can reverse our action if that's the case. But I don't think that's going to happen. I know there's a problem, and so this is, you know, this is not an ordinance I brought, but it's something I'm very passionate about. Thank you, thank you. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Peacock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I greatly appreciate it. I would like to start off by saying that I too received a lot of emails in regards to an article that was written in the Quot City Times, how it was written, and some comments I made, and some comments that other people on the council have made. And to each his own, I would say, but I would say this, my job is to look at the ordinance, see if the ordinance will help all of Davenport, see if the ordinance is aimed, is intent, is accurate, and is going to do what it's entitled, what it's meant to do. And I would, I will reassert myself, reaffirm myself by saying, I truly still think that this, the way it is written right now, it is problematic. That being said, I received some correspondence from, I saw correspondence that all the city council members received from staff. I greatly appreciate, appreciate that. The clarification from the corporate council, the clarification from the chief of police, I greatly appreciate that as well. But you could, no one on the council, no one in staff can really reassure me that the intent, if this thing goes through, that this is not a pretext to do, to look into other crimes. If the intent is to reduce crime in Davenport, to reduce gun violence, then let's tackle those things. That being said, I would go on to say, I understand what people are saying about the noise up and down Brady Street, up and down Harrison Street. The question is, will this ordinance curb those things? The answer is no. The answer is no. Once a motorcycle or whoever rev their engines, most likely they are speeding. Most likely they are speeding, unless they're at a stoplight and they rev their engines idle. So, there's laws on the books already for speeding. If we can just enforce those laws, then we can address those things as well. But once again, I will reaffirm my position that this ordinance is not written properly. I think that one of the comments, I think, from corporate council, we should really look at this, do a further study, and reevaluate this and bring this back before the council. I think that's the best course of action. What we don't want to do is do something haphazardly. I think this is what we just did, but I just wanted to communicate to everyone that I truly understand that the noise, it is crazy up and down Brady. Somebody who lives in between both of those streets, I truly understand, but if we're going to do something, let's do it the right way. And thank you so very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Alderman Peacock. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. I appreciate the words of my colleagues so far, and I also wanted to make mention that the gentleman from the Second Ward who spoke on, you know, if you're going to root cause, the traffic speed is absolutely something that we're looking at. We've been working with the neighborhoods, and several Aldermen have made a proposal to the city staff that we need to work with Iowa DOT to figure out how to slow cars down on Brady and Harrison, and that's absolutely a priority and is part of this. So, I wanted to thank everybody who reached out via email to share their thoughts on this issue. Some really well-thought-out, good points were made, and I just wanted to express that I appreciate your input. There were a few misunderstandings, I think, that I received in several emails. One was that this is a new ordinance, so we need to be very clear, this is an existing muffler ordinance that we have in Davenport. We have an ordinance, we've had it, we're making, there's a proposal to make an amendment to that existing ordinance in order to clarify that the violation can be a noise issue or a smoke issue. It does not have to be both. The second thing that continued to come up is that, oh, the second update is that we're adding an objective measurement of 50 feet. And that was really a big concern that I was getting from the people who are reaching out via email, that 50 feet was too short of a distance. And I also heard that, the concern that the ordinance was for any noise coming from the car, and that is not true, the ordinance is specifically, specific to noise coming from the muffler. So, I spent the last couple of days researching different muffler ordinances across the country, and more specifically across Iowa. This is what I found. Every single city that I researched in the state of Iowa and the country had a muffler ordinance. From there, I focused on cities in Iowa, and what I found is that there was a common thread. Typically, the ordinance began with the state's ordinance. That's what ours does, okay? The current verbiage is just the state verbiage, that's the ordinance for the state of Iowa. And then, most ordinances were followed by a clarifying paragraph. And the clarifying paragraph typically dealt with decibel level. And the clarifying paragraph typically dealt with decibel level and objective measuring distance, okay? So the decibel level that was most common was 86 decibels. I found a range anywhere from 78 to 96, but 86 was most common. Objective measuring distance was anywhere between 25 and 200 feet, with 50 feet being the most common. I only found 200 feet in one place, that was in Marion, Iowa. Everywhere else, it was pretty standardly taken at 50 feet. And that means that to, to get a violation, the decibel level would have to be greater than 86 measured from 50 feet away, just so we're all comparing apples to apples. So based on the information I found and my experience fielding resident complaints, like my colleague Alderwoman McGinnis said, there's no way I could support getting rid of the muffler ordinance. I am willing to discuss a few things regarding the ordinance as proposed. The objective measurement criteria, establishing that or removing that and not having it in there at all. I would love to have that conversation. And then also exploring more heavily finding modified mufflers. And I do have a question for Tom on that. What is our ability to more heavily find people who have actually modified their muffler as opposed to have a muffler that isn't operating properly?
I'll have to look into that. One of the reasons it's only a $20 fine is because it more or less mirrors the state and the state sets the scheduled fine for $20. So I'll have to see if we have some flexibility, if we get further away from the state's definition to change that fine amount.
Okay, and I, I thought that I had read that Betendorf's fine amount was $68.50 or something like that. So I think there is some varying degrees in how much you're fined. Second question for you, Mr. Warner. We received an email from Chief Sikorski that said that basically anyone who was pulled over for a loud muffler in the last year, and it was an unmodified muffler, meaning that the muffler was just loud, it wasn't modified in any way to be loud, they were let off with a warning. And then if they were picked up for a second infraction, at that point they were, they were fined. Is there any way for us to codify that language? Cause I think that's a really good practice when dealing with this nuisance.
If it helps, I can tell you that, you know, I've been here 25 plus years and that's been the enforcement policy and it carries through to the prosecution. If the ticket actually goes to court and it has to do with the condition of the muffler has deteriorated, so it needs replaced or repaired. What we do in that, those instances is the individual, if they will go repair it, the ticket is dismissed. And we don't, as you heard tonight, there's concerns about having a $20 fine. There is no $20 fine that's added. What we want is compliance. We want people to take care of the problem.
Thank you, Tom, and I agree. You know, these loud mufflers, it's, it's a nuisance. It's a nuisance to our neighborhoods and we do need to address the nuisance because it's a quality of life issue. And in some extreme cases with some of these motorcycles, it is a public health issue because the, the mufflers are loud enough that they can cause acute trauma to the ear if you're close enough to that motorcycle at an intersection. So I agree, we, we may need a little more specificity. I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say, but I think overall, we'll all agree, the goal is to reduce noise, the noise nuisance that's coming from mufflers, without being overly burdensome on, on folks who just have loud mufflers and may not have the resources to get them fixed. So appreciate the time, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman, Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes.
First of all, I'd really like to thank Alderman Grip for the research he did on this because those are some of my questions and for once I didn't get to it. So thank you very much for doing that research, Alderman Grip. Another thing about decibels, I remember I brought up a while ago about decibels on events that we would vote on and that this has been discussed in past councils and that there was really no way to deal with decibels. There was no way to measure it. So I would assume that that would apply to something like this as well. So I would assume that decibels would continue to not be a good metric. I'd also like to recommend that if somebody gets a, you know, they have not modified or even if they have modified their muffler and they are stopped and get a ticket for the $20, that that fine be dismissed if they can show a receipt that they have complied and gotten it fixed. So I think that's a way that we can support getting compliance with this. I, we got another email this afternoon, I assume to everybody, that went into great detail as well. But they, but this person who said probably his car is one of the offenders, said that the audible from 50 feet is probably the worst possible way of going about this. As some cars are, will make that kind of muffler noise anyway, even if they're new. So I think that this could probably be addressed further. And this is one of the reasons why I think it's wise not to suspend the rules too early on, on many issues, because it has brought up, through this third time, it has brought up a lot of public comment and a lot of thoughtful comments. The other thing is, we have a problem is right on the corner of Second, Seventh and Eighth over on North Pine and the Cheyenne area, there tends to be a lot of motorcycles that race through. So yes, I get frustrated over there too, because that's near where I live. But a lot of it could be tied to speeding as well. So perhaps this one takes a little more thought.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Jobjen.
Thank you, I just have one question for Tom, our council. Tom, as Alderman Grip pointed out, this is not a new ordinance. This is a modification to an existing ordinance. Should next week this modification get voted down, that, does that mean there is a repeal of the current ordinance?
No, the current ordinance would remain on the books.
Okay, I thought so, just wanted to make sure, thank you, bud.
Thank you, Alderman Jobjen. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. And thank you, I'd like to thank everyone as well for all your emails. You gave me something to ponder as, as the meeting approached. And I did take some time to look into this and think it through. Your insight and willingness to think about those that are marginalized and how this would affect them is appreciated. In this situation, I feel like it misses the mark. You really can't spend any amount of time on these major corridors without gaining some appreciation of the problem. These are not broken mufflers. These are aftermarket things that are designed to shake windows, that can induce physical pain in your eardrum, and it's not always while they're going fast. In fact, sometimes the worst offenders are when there's six or seven of them sitting at a stoplight and they're all just either idling, which is very loud, or revving their engine. My least favorite of all those are the ones that are designed, what do they call it? Report or they shoot and they sound like gunshots. And you want to talk about malicious or terrorizing neighbors? I've actually seen people run for cover because it's that disorienting. So these, these people are sincerely creating a, a, a problem in our neighborhood. Again, this item on our agenda is just cleaning up language of the existing ordinance. As it's written, it's my understanding that, you know, the same type of person that has the time and the resources to put an aftermarket muffler on their car is going to be the same type of person that has the time and resources to go protest a ticket because they weren't making noise and smoke. Whereas somebody who's truly in one of those marginalized communities with a broken muffler, they're typically going to be less likely to be able to go and protest some sort of ticket. So in some sense, this is actually making an ordinance that's already on the books more equitable and frankly, just to make more sense. If we're going to have it on the books, let's make sure that it can do what it's intended to do. If you saw me fidgeting with my phone, I was trying to, I think I've got this gadget on there where you can actually measure rooms, because that's what I was doing at home, was trying to figure out, what is 50 feet? And this is just one person's perception, but when you're dealing with multiple individuals who like to drive together in circuits and you're trying to identify who has the loud muffler and, and being able to fairly apply that assessment to the car, I think 50 feet seems like a very reasonable distance. Thanks for your time, Alderman Ambrose.
All right, thank you, Alderman Condon. You should know where 50 feet is, that's where you take your half-court shots. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Currently, Tom, the way this is written, it is, it is 50 feet, not 50 feet with the decibel level, correct?
It's just 50 feet, no decibel.
See, that's where I have, I have a concern with that. And I agree with Alderman Grip that we should tie something to that because at 50 feet, you can hear a lot of things. At 50 feet, I can hear the garbage truck. At 50 feet, you know, I can hear the snowplows, I can hear the street sweepers, you know? So if it's really, you know, a noise issue, it needs to be an issue, not just, you know, I can hear your muffler from 50 feet. Because quite honestly, if we went out and turned my Jeep on and walked away 50 feet, we probably would hear it. So I would like to see something tied to that to make, you know, to either extend the distance. I don't know what options we have or, you know, some decimal, 86 decimals or whatever. But could you give us some options for next week that we could discuss maybe?
By next week's going to be a little tight. We will try. If not, I would suggest just amending it to remove the 50 feet and then we will study it to tie a decibel reading and a distance together and come back with that as a separate amendment down the line. I can tell you on the decibel readings from experience, traffic on a street usually runs about 65 decibels, give or take. So when Alderman Grip is talking about 86, that is something that would stand out well above the sound of the traffic in general.
All right. Alderman Dormand, please.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. A lot of my colleagues here have already touched on a lot of the same items that I wanted to cover today. But I also wanted to give a little bit more clarity, maybe. In the past, I have talked a lot about speed and noise and drag racing. And specifically went into details about how we are trying to do something about it. Alderman Grip already touched upon it, but we have a task force set up trying to tackle a lot of the speed, noise and just general traffic issues that are really impacting our core neighborhoods. It is more than just the Main Street, Harrison, Brady corridor that we continue to talk about. It just so happens those are the individuals that have come together to address the problem. But I've heard the same type of complaints specifically about the loud noise from people who live off of Kimberly, people who live off of Pretty Ridge, people who live off of Locust. I know many of my fellow aldermen have talked about it in all other parts of town. So this ordinance really is not one that only impacts my neighborhood, which has gotten a lot of the talk and discussion recently. But it, it does impact all of Davenport. We are all being impacted and frankly, terrorized by the loud noise that is coming from the people who claim to be disrespecting other people's personal rights and freedoms to live somewhere where they aren't having their ears impacted and their sleep debreded. And the cars that we're talking about, they also, I should reiterate, are not just your standard car that has a bad muffler, it's not even your, maybe even sportier car. These are cars that people intentionally put on loud mufflers and not only put on loud mufflers, drive their cars in a fashion that allows the loud noise to pierce through your homes, your ears, whatever it may be trying to prevent you from doing that. I can't tell you how many times I have people come drive down the street. I live on Brady, so this one, you know, isn't already. But how many times people drive down the street, they downshift so their motorcycle is in neutral and just absolutely rip on the gas at choose a piercing noise that you can hear no matter where you are. And one thing I really would like to address that if we want to change the 50-foot regulation that I think we should change it to, if you can hear the noise when you're in your backyard, if you can hear the noise when you're in your house, if you can hear your noise in your house with all of your windows closed and you're in your back bedroom and it still sounds like you're outside, those are the cars we need to address. And that is what we're trying to get at and what we're trying to tackle here. This problem is one that it's very unfortunate that we have it because it's really just people wanting to be loud and noisy and to show off in order to gain attention to themselves without thinking about others at all. And we know that no one on our task force thinks that this ordinance will stop any of our noise or speed issues, but it's one step of many that we have to come hopefully that will tackle this problem long-term for our neighbors. We are now at a point where neighbors are having serious discussions whether they are going to continue to live in Davenport and continue to live in these already struggling neighborhoods, or if they are going to move to other parts of town or other cities within the Quad Cities, just so they can get peace and quiet at night. And as many of you already know, the core neighborhoods we have in Davenport Central City are already ones that are struggling at this. And to think that we don't want to try to tackle one of the problems that is now driving people out of these neighborhoods is real alarming. And I really hope that we can rally around this and find a way to get this ordinance enforceable so that we can hopefully get some peace and quiet back in our, our neighborhood. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Dormand. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you for allowing me to speak and I'll be very brief. One concern, the only concern I would have is in any change to this, that we're talking very closely to our police department because, yes, speed, we can, we can, we can set up operations to catch speeding. It's expensive to do for our police department. It's just strange right now, it's difficult during COVID. But when you start tying speed and distance and, and DBs, then, then it's the measurement. So we can't really, we can't say, well, this person, you have to, the person has to be doing it. It has to be observed and it has to be measured. So anything we do to this ordinance that makes it more difficult is, means it's going to be an ordinance that is not going to be helpful to our neighborhoods because it's going to be very hard to enforce. So I would urge us to be very thoughtful about adding any other, being careful about the criteria, not to make it easier to catch people, but to make it easier to enforce. So that's, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose, for letting me speak. I think some folks know that during the shutdown during COVID, every single night I was pretty much downtown and driving the city. And probably many nights, Ms. Spiegel and the chief know that I called them or talked to them every night because of some of the things that were going on with motorcycles and pickups and cars conjugating in a certain parking lot downstairs and downtown. And then running the circle, and if you don't know what the circle is, it's Brady, basically up the hill to Kimberly and/or our Central Park or in between, and then come down Harrison. The noise and the disruption and people that live down here that would call me daily, in the evening mostly, about that. And then I would sit at the intersection of where the Arcade Building is and watch constant, extreme noise. So I just want to applaud the council for taking this on. I want to applaud the administration for submitting something. I want to applaud the administration for submitting something. It sounds like there's a consensus to do something, and I'd encourage that. Maybe some tweaks or whatever, maybe Mr. Warner has some other ideas, maybe there's adjustments, but there has to be done. Because the work and the enforcement operations that we did helped, but it's still people, as some of you have said, don't care. And the impact that they have at night on people that live along these corridors and other areas, as have been mentioned by many of my colleagues, there has to be something done because they don't care. And until we enforce something or have something solid, they'll continue to do it. So I just applaud you for doing something, and I'd encourage you to keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, we've been around a while, Mike, and every year this is a huge issue. You know, enforcement, always a challenge, you know, we challenge for all sorts of enforcement, you know? In Scott County, there's 20,000 licensed motorcycles, so a lot of issues, you know? We try to ask and help people to be good neighbors and good citizens, and, you know, yet we still continue to have these challenges. So, you know, we'll move forward and if someone thinks they've been treated unfairly, I always encourage them to contact their Alderman and let the Alderman try to help them out. Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, number two is a first consideration, ordinance amending Schedule V of Chapter 10.96 entitled four-way stop intersections by adding Kirkwood Boulevard and Eastern Avenue. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Okay, the next are Alderman Dorman. Alderman Dorman.
Oh, sorry, I muted myself when I tried to unmute myself, my apologies. I just want to say thank you to Gary Stat and Brian Shad looking into this one for me. This has been an intersection that had complaints about visibility, and then it was proven to have the research behind it, crash history, because of the blind intersection when you're coming south off of Eastern. So very appreciative of those two for the work they do, looking into these things and trying to make our streets safer.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. The next is our liquor license renewal, we won't go through them, but if you want to take a look at them, you can find them on our social media platform, and I ask Alderman Jogen to set the agenda.
I make a motion that item one be placed on the discussion agenda, items two and three placed on the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. The next area is Public Safety, I'm sorry, Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Dorman, Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, we have six items this evening for Public Works. Item number one is a resolution accepting work completed under the CY-20 micro-surfacing contract. The total contract line mark corporation was $202,045. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting work completed under the FY-21 DOT full-depth patching project. The total contract with Legman Construction Incorporated was $149,519.60. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting work completed under the 2019 tree and debris clearing on stream projects. The total contract with cornerstone demolition and clearing of Beddendorf Iowa was $108,714. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding the contract for digester number one and number two cleanout at the Water Pollution Control Plant to WTO Central LLC of Baltimore, Maryland in the amount of $184,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a motion approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Kelling subdrain installation project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Alderwoman Lee.
Yes, I'd just like to say that I will abstain from vote on item five due to conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lee, anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number six, a motion approving a waiver, temporary deferral of sidewalk installation for the proposed Speedway store to be built at the intersection of Northwest Boulevard and Hillendale Road, and staff recommends denial. A no vote denies the request. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Sure, please step forward.
My name is Gary Caldwell, and I work for Speedway. Was coming in to discuss the sidewalk waiver. Our initial understanding when we had a pre-construction meeting with staff was that we would waive, we would put in a waiver for the sidewalks and they would be installed at a different date. Our current development plans actually show a sidewalk being installed at a later date. I don't know how many people are familiar with the area where we are at Northwest Boulevard in Hillendale, but there are no other properties currently with any sidewalks at this time. And us installing a sidewalk right now wouldn't serve much benefit to anyone because they don't go anywhere, they don't connect to any other properties in that area. We just want to kind of do what makes the most sense, and we've run into this before in other municipalities. And I asked, and Davenport doesn't currently have anything like this, but you pay a percentage into a pot or a kitty, and they use that money to develop other sidewalks in other areas that need construction work or, you know, that are damaged. Instead of us paying right now at somewhere between $40,000 and $50,000 to put in sidewalks that won't be utilized. And my current understanding is that at this time, there isn't a timeline for when the other properties will be installing sidewalks. So while ours is sitting there deteriorating and we're worried about the maintenance, we don't necessarily know when the other ones are going to get installed and put in. So, you know, just wanted to, excuse me, give our point of view on that and, you know, hopefully get the waiver accepted.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can we have someone from staff give us an overview of why we're recommending denial here? Please.
Good evening, everyone, Brian Shad, City Engineer, Public Works. Historically, we have granted sidewalk waivers due to various reasons. Typically, you see those in those commercial or industrial areas where in previous years, we did not see that foot traffic or pedestrian presence. Staff recognizes that pedestrian connections is a very high priority for our mayor and council. So as we've been looking at developments here through the years, the past few years, we've taken that very seriously into consideration. And anecdotally, we've seen that even as we put bike lanes out or as our COVID has impacted our society lately, we see people that want to get out, take their 15-minute breaks, 30-minute breaks, to get out and walk, get some fresh air, enjoy that outside before they have to go back into their offices. We fully support the pedestrian aspect and build out for this area. We fully recognize there are no other pedestrian facilities in this area, but unfortunately, there always has to be the first one in the island.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is there anyone from council wishing to address this item? Alderman Grip.
Thank you. Can somebody from staff answer, is the sidewalk that's being ordered in, it doesn't show on the picture in our packet? Does it travel the entire length of both road-facing on the property? I didn't say that right. Can you answer that, Brian?
Yes, the sidewalk that staff would ask to be installed would be the portion that would be along Hillendale Road. We would not ask for the section along Northwest Boulevard and Highway 130 at this time.
Okay, good, all right, so yes on Hillendale, no on Northwest Boulevard. Okay, I would ask that we keep this on discussion. I'd like to get some input from the folks at the GDRC, and then I'd also like to go out and take a better look at the industrial park myself, so before I make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Chair. This is in my ward, and I agree with Alderman Grip. I do have a question for city staff. Are there any plans on, I recognize this is the first one in the area. Are there any plans on getting sidewalks on any of these other areas along Hillendale to start making a connection for pedestrians? Because if the sidewalk doesn't really go anywhere, it probably won't be used. But if the other ones are going to be asked to also put in sidewalks, that would probably change how I consider this. And I do want to go spend a little more time out there as well. So staff, can you help me with that?
Currently, all the developments in this area have had sidewalk waivers to date, so it would be up to the council to order in those sidewalks.
Okay, thank you, because I was surprised that there weren't any other ones anywhere in the area that I saw. Okay, thank you. So I agree that this should be put on discussion.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Abrams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Been a lot of waivers over the year. And we got to be thankful the company has chose Davenport on this development. And to be a little flexible with them along with the other properties out there. I would ask our corporate counsel to come up with a strategy where he's not being held accountable until everybody else is brought into the sidewalk waiver, so let's let's keep an open mind on this, you know, like Alderman Grip says, let's keep it on discussion. But I think we got to be very pro-business and, you know, there's a lot of waivers that have been out there in the past, so let's let's be supporters of our businesses and let's try to get it worked out. And I think our corporate counsel does a great job as LA is on these issues. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Dorman.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. This is a question for, I guess, either Brian or Tom, I don't know who would be able to answer best, but and it was kind of already talked about and discussed, but when we talk about ordering in sidewalks for other businesses, or even if we granted this waiver other than asking Speedway to go do it, what would that process be and how does the process work? And would it be a case if we said no on this property this cycle? Would in the next cycle, we be able to say all the other properties now have to get a plan to get sidewalks installed? I guess, is there more clarity on that?
Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but it really is, we could waive the sidewalks at this time, and the council could the following cycle order in said sidewalk at the cost of the developer. It's really just kind of a, typically it was deferred until there was enough development within an area to really have everyone place in their sidewalks.
Correct, Brian, you pretty much touched on all of that, needed to be touched on. We'd have to look at each one of those individually to see if there was a specific trigger put in them and whether that trigger has been met. If there isn't, we could certainly bring forward an action item ordering the sidewalks in.
Thank you to both of you guys. I think that that information definitely will be very helpful for next council meeting if possible to get it. Because I think it would be nice to know if we are, if there were specific triggers in there, or if we are at a point where we now have enough development in order to go ahead and start getting sidewalks in the area. But either way, it sounds like we might be taking a field trip out there to Northwest Boulevard. So, and the other, and the one who sets the agenda as well definitely places come out.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Alderman Grip.
Thank you, I just did want to make sure I provided some clarity to my colleagues that the industrial park does have a board, the GDRC, that works with the business owners. And they recruit businesses to the area, they work with the business areas for different improvements and things like that. And we would not want to make any decisions without conferring with them and getting their opinion. And Alderwoman Lee and I both serve as representatives of the city on that board, and we will certainly bring this up, I believe our meeting is next week, at that meeting and have a discussion and then bring the results back to the council so that you can understand what the GDRC's position is as we weigh our options.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on, and Alderman Dorman, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Thank you, Alderman Dunn, I move to place item number six on the discussion agenda and one through five on the consent agenda.
We have a motion. And a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. And that's it for Public Works this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. The last area to discuss is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Pecoff will discuss this, Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor, we have 10 items on finance agenda this evening. The first item is a third consideration ordinance amending Section 15.08.215 entitled Combined Code Board of Appeals, Power and Duty by Amending Subsection A. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Okay, our second item is a resolution approving the purchase of five dump truck bodies with options in the amount of $314,120 from Tri-State Truck Equipment of Dubuque, Iowa, and five dump truck chassis with trades in the amount of $395,025 to Truck Country of Davenport, Iowa. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Our third item is a resolution approving the purchase of an end loader from Martin Equipment for $168,700 using the Sourcewell Contract Number 032119-JDC. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Our fourth item is a resolution approving the purchase of three solid waste truck bodies to Kilburg Equipment LLC of Sebula, Iowa in the amount of $132,582 CIP 10503. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Two solid wastes, sorry. Resolution approving the purchase of three solid waste truck chassis from Elliott Equipment of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $464,444 CIP 10503. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Item number six is a resolution approving the purchase of a body worn camera package from Axon Enterprises in the amount of $362,572. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Item number seven is a resolution approving the reduction of interest rate on taxable sewer revenue bonds series 2010, Build America Bond Direct Payment. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Item number eight is a motion approving the payment for the annual renewal of VMware licensing using the NASPO, National Association of State Procurement Officers, Contract Number AR2493. number AR 2493 with CDW-G of Vernon Hills, Illinois, in the amount of $90,551.74. Is there anyone wishing, from the public wishing to address that item? Council? Item number nine is a motion awarding the contract to relocate the burn tower training structure to the new training location to Goodwin House Moving, Inc. of Washington, Iowa, in the amount of $79,000 CIP 23048. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? And item number 10 is a motion approving a four-year collective bargaining agreement between the City of Davenport and the Amalgamated Transit Unit, local union number 312, for the term beginning July 1, 2021 and ending June 30, 2025. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Next on your agenda, we've listed our purchases from 10,000 to 50,000. We don't read each of those out loud, but they're listed there for your information. And I will ask Alderman Peacock if he would please set the agenda.
I move to place all items on the consent agenda.
It's all, it's gone.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That concludes finance, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Next, are there any other ordinance resolutions or motions? There are none tonight. Next area is, is there any public with business? If there are, please come to the podium. You'll have five minutes. Please give your name and address or ward. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. And again, five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. Bill Handle, Nashville, Tennessee, in Davenport, Ward 4. Five minutes, you can go back to your families and well-deserved evening. Anyway, what I'll talk about tonight is briefly about the former, soon to be former YM, YWCA. I feel that one possibly ideal use for it to be reused would be for, as a cultural center for the Quad Cities. So, you know, Rock Island, of course, has its botanical center. I think with the German Historical Society adjoining the YM site and with Washington Square being the precursor to its total, its current use, I think the fact that Antoine Leclerc decided to name it after our founding father, I think it'd be appropriate for that building to be turned into some type of a cultural center honoring all the various nationalities that came to form the Quad Cities on top of the German immigrants that came to the Quad Cities. I think it's a viable thing. The building is of architectural quality, well-built. It was meant to be a public building and to, I think it'd be altogether appropriate for it to be used for that type of use. And I want to just raise that issue to you, your thinking at this point. And then the other thing of tonight, obviously, I constantly, I'm interested in the riverfront and so right now, let's, let's go, if we would, from the Modern Woodman Park, from the train tracks to the, to the riverfront. I want to go through that and give you some ideas that I have thought that might be of some benefit for the city. Starting at Modern Woodman Park, just go down a little bit, right in between the three blocks between Gaines and Ripley. That's a three-block area and if you're a pedestrian, there's no way for you to get across those tracks. And I think we've got something, we've got a lot of people that use the farmer's market and they, unless you get in a car again, you can't get back to where the Ferris wheel is. Obviously, we've got a private owner for that. I think it would be appropriate for the city to take some type of an interest to have it operating when the farmer's market is in operation. And I think a pedestrian cut through there would be highly appropriate and we'd get a lot more use of the, of the Ferris wheel. So let's go down a little farther. Peterson Pavilion, Biderbeck Drive, of course, originally it went all the way around, at that point, Muni Stadium, then John O'Donnell, now Modern Woodman Park, and was cut off at that point. And it's a very straggly dead end at that point. It's right next to Peterson Pavilion. Seems to me an ideal thing would be to have a roundabout like we just got through building on, what is it, 8th Street or 6th Street? And very nice facility, got a roundabout right there. And again, I think that's a perfect location for some type of very artistic and lively statue for Bix Biderbeck. I could see him kind of like, you know, the Rockefeller Center statue that they've got with the Atlas or whatever. We've got Bix, you know, holding his horn, he's got running shoes, and we've got water squirting on him. I think it'd be a real, you know, upgrade from the kind of the funereal kind of pose that he's got right now on, on the current Peterson Pavilion. So I think that's a possibility. So let's go farther down. The rebuilding of Biderbeck Drive, I think is going along very well. I have to commend the city and, and the railroad for the work they're doing. Wonderful. I think, I think it's, it's a really positive thing. I think lining up with the high, you know, the raised portion of the figgy, perfect place for a monumental sculpture that is the thing that's, the sculpture that people think of when they think of Davenport. Right now, the RD8, RDG, whatever, design calls for a big mound of earth right in front of the figgy and some kind of a sculpture kind of on top of it or something. No, what, when you put a hill, it, if you're on the hill, it's fine because you have a nice view, but everybody else, that hill spoils your view and we don't want to have that. In fact, I think it would be so much better to have the sculpture right at the riverfront and have a, have a essentially unobstructed view of that, of that sculpture. There'll be more to, I'll be talking about in future times. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Anyone else? I'm pausing. Anyone else? Any comments? Very good. Any other reports, Ms. Merrick? Very good. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion and a second. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Have a good weekend and be safe. Wear your mask.